All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. And in attendance, we have, of course, myself, a chair representing the 4th District, councilmember Christopher Burnett from the 8th District, councilmember Z. Cohen from the 1st District, Chair Eric Costello of the 11th District, Councilmember Antonio Lover is not here yet, Councilmember Alicia Porter of the 10th District, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District is not here yet. Don't see other members of the council here. For members of the Office of the President, I see Nikki Thompson. Matt Steckman, I'm not sure if you're on. Don't see Matt. Aaron DeGraff, right? I don't see Aaron either. Representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mihiu. And Nina Themelis. Okay, so this afternoon, the committee will be, will have a hearing for Bill LO-21-0008, Understanding the SAO New Minor Crimes Prosecution Policy, for the purpose of inviting the State's Attorney, State's Attorney of Baltimore City to provide the council with a comprehensive briefing about the recently enacted policy related to the prosecution of low-level offenses, and to explain how this policy will be operational by us. This bill was introduced on April 8, 2021, and it was sponsored by myself. I think this, this is an important opportunity to dig into the policies that we put forward and to discuss with the State's Attorney's Office what this will mean for our approach to low-level offenses here in the city. And I'm eager to hear what you guys have to say. So without further ado, I'll hand the floor to Madam State's Attorney, Marilyn Mosby. You're muted.
Thank you so much. Okay. So first and foremost, I want to say thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to be able to present before yourself and before council members. I really wanted an opportunity to be able to allow you all to ask any sort of questions that you may have. I know that there's been a great deal of misinformation that has been put out about what our policies are and what are the permanency of what are COVID policies that have already been in existence for over a year. So being able to be here and to provide you a comprehensive briefing is what I truly appreciate. Before I go into it, I do want to allow you all to know who's on the line from the State's Attorney's Office. From my team, I have my Chief Deputy Michael Shatzow, my Chief of Major Crimes Janice Bledsoe, Chief of Operations Valda Ricks, Erin Murphy, who's my Chief Counsel, Michael Collins, my Strategic Policy and Planning Director, Marie Stevenson, who just started last week, who is the Chief of External Affairs, my Chief of Communications, Sid Richardson, Senior Policy Analyst Jennifer Haslam, and of course, my Legislative Director Yusuf Ahmad. So if you all have additional questions beyond what I'm going to present today, we are here and accessible and ready to answer, ready and willing to answer your questions. So first and foremost, on March 13, Chief Judge Mary Ellen Barbera issued an administrative order announcing a statewide closure of the courts to the public due to the global pandemic. And since that time, the courts, and I think this is important because I need you all to understand the foundation of what, how we've existed and our new normal for the past year. But since that time, the courts have intermittently opened in some capacity only to close again by similar orders in late fall when there was a resurgence of the virus. So there have been several sort of limitations on the court. We have two trial courts, one in district, one in circuit. Felonies and some misdemeanors are tried in Circuit Court if they, individual praise a jury trial. Most misdemeanors are tried in the district court. District Court doesn't have jury trials. The only time that we have jury trials is in Circuit Court. And so the current limitations that are still in existence until April 26, that there are no jury trials, the Circuit Court is closed to the public, there are guilty pleas and bail reviews that have been occurring in the past year in Circuit Court, and there are motions that are being virtually heard. The District Court actually became fully operational as well as juvenile in March, on March 22. So they are resuming their day-to-day dockets. Circuit Court will resume jury trials on April 26. And I tell you this because this is really important. We follow the schedule of the courts. But the courts are specially setting, what they call specially setting trials, and prioritizing those incarcerated on homicides and shootings, non-fadals, right? So right now, the courts are setting in four trials a week, starting in June. As of April 26, they will be setting in two trials a week until June. And so their focus and what our focus has been and will continue to be coming out of this pandemic is on violent crime and those that are incarcerated. So despite the court's limitations, the work of our office has continued. Last year, the State Attorney's Office processed, meaning we charged. Even though the cases, again, the, the courts were not operational, we had over 2,886 serious felonies that we processed, meaning we charged and/or indicted. The misdemeanors were over 12,045. A majority of those were victim violent crimes and gun crimes. In traffic, we had over 9,861 cases. In the criminal cases in Circuit Court, we had 4,340 cases, which consists of felonies, jury trials, and appeals. So I tell you these numbers because, again, this is not a typical sort of year. Each of you should have received our annual report that kind of outlines these numbers. But I tell you this because we are still charging cases, right? And so we were charging cases from, you know, occurrences that were happening in 2019, and then we had to charge cases that actually happened in 2020, and we're still charging cases even today. And so we're gonna have a backlog of cases where we have to prioritize the type of cases that we're gonna be proceeding upon. Prior to the global pandemic, one of the ways in which we captured this type of data, and we will continue to do so, do so once the court resumes to full operational mode, is that we are, we had conviction rates, and we don't measure our success by conviction. Justice is the only parameter of success for our office. However, we capture that information and to be transparent with the public. In 2019, our felony conviction rate was 90%. Our homicide conviction rate was 81%. Our major investigations unit was, which is focuses on criminal enterprises, was 98%. Our Gun Violence Enforcement Division, where at that point we were housing detectives in our office, was 91%. Our narcotics unit was 98%. And our Special Victims Unit that focuses on sexual assaults, domestic violence, and child abuse cases were 96%. So I tell you that because nine times out of 10, if the police officers get these guys off the street, I have the most talented prosecutors in the country, we, despite the hurdles that are up against us and the distrust of the criminal justice system, we will secure a conviction. But much like the courts, our focus has been and continues to be, and I think that this needs to be clear, on victim crimes, on ensuring our victims and witnesses remain our priority. Last year, I'm sure many of you saw, we launched the second phase of You're Not Alone Together, We're Stronger campaign, which is continuing the public education push to remind residents about the support services for victims and witnesses of crime. We, in that campaign, what we saw, and one of the reasons why you are seeing the billboards across from the police station with the woman with the battered eye, where we're basically saying, do not mask domestic abuse, is because we saw a drastic increase in domestic violence in the city of Baltimore, and not just in the city of Baltimore, but nationally. And so part of that campaign, we introduced an anonymous tip line. Now, we introduced this anonymous tip line in the middle of a global pandemic. So, you know, we'll be sure to give you that information. It's 1-877-SAO4-TIP. But this campaign included a targeted push to share resources for domestic violence victims. It included a Community Court Watch app that you can download on your smartphone that would allow constituents to be able to follow and track cases online. And we also, through the funding means, I have to say, understanding that this has been and always will be a priority, victims and witnesses are the most important stakeholder in the criminal justice system, we've secured over $7.9 million in Victims of Crime Act funding, and last year, $50,000 in COVID relief funding to be able to provide PPE to our victims and witnesses of crime when they come in to the Circuit Court. This funding has allowed us to double the size of Victim Witness Service Division. We've added a Victim Witness Advocate in every single one of our prosecutorial divisions, including a bilingual advocate. And one of the requests from a budget perspective is that this was a five-year grant. I think that we are in year three or four of that grant, and these important sort of positions have allowed us to service 34 times the number of victims and witnesses of crime than when we first started in 2015. In the past two years alone, we've serviced 18,586 victims and witnesses of crime. Last year, virtually, we serviced 8,644 victims and witnesses. In the past two years, we have the only bereavement center in the entire state of Maryland where we offer lifetime grief counseling. And, and last year alone, again, virtually, we offered more than 722 grief counseling sessions and relocated 153 victims and witnesses of crime in the global pandemic. So I tell you all of that because, again, it is incredibly important for us to understand the focus for my office and the focus for the police have been to focus on violent crime in the past year. Understanding the need to focus on victims and violent crime. Last year, I used my discretion and underwent somewhat of an experiment with the criminal justice system. We consulted with public health experts to slow the spread of COVID-19 and jails and in prisons, and in order to minimize public and police exposure to individuals that would be cycled in and out of jail within a matter of 24 hours. And we decided to stop prosecuting low-level offenses that we believed, in theory at that point, had nothing to do with public safety. Those offenses included drug possession, paraphernalia, prostitution, trespassing minor traffic offenses, roguin vagabond, open container. And in addition to enumerating those offenses that we would no longer be prosecuting, we dismissed 1,423 open and pending cases pertaining to those offenses. We quashed, or what is called eliminated, 1,415 warrants for those, again, aforementioned offenses. We pushed the governor to reduce the prison population that thereafter resulted in two executive orders on the early release of approximately 2,000 individuals. We opened a sentencing review unit to review and reduce excessive sentences for juvenile lifers in the elderly population. And we even refined our approach to our bail recommendations and warrants that we were asking to only focus on individuals that pose public safety risks. And so as a direct result of our policies, the overall incarceration population in Baltimore City is down approximately 20%, 20%. There has been a 39% reduction in the people entering the criminal justice system compared to this time last year. These were those low-level offenses, again, that they would be circulated in and out of the criminal justice system. And there's been an 80% decrease in drug arrests. So those stats are in direct, sort of, a direct result of our policies. But thanks to the stability of the Police Department and the leadership within the Police Department, unlike 63 of the 66 other major municipalities in this country, our violent crime went down by 20% comparing March 13, 2020 to March 13, 2021. Our property crime went down 36%. Of the nearly 1,500 individuals where we eliminated or dismissed their charges, only five of those individuals were rearrested for another offense. By comparison, Maryland's recidivism rate is estimated to be around 40%. That recidivism rate is .04%. We even measured the 911 calls, which is a proxy for public concern about drug use, public intoxication, and sex work. And these calls did not increase, but rather decreased. There was a 33% reduction in calls mentioning drugs and a 50% reduction in calls mentioning sex work compared to the past two years preceding it. So again, I think it's really important. I am not attributing the decline in crime to my policies. Again, I've worked with five police commissioners in the past six years and four mayors. That has everything to do with the leadership and stability of the Police Department. But clearly, based on the fact that violent crime did not increase, these low-level offenders did not reoffend, it suggests that there is no public safety value. And what we thought in theory is actually true, and that there is no public safety value and never really was any public safety value in prosecuting these low-level offenses. And so among the several factors that we considered in making these policies permanent, I in no way want to downplay the violent crime that still exists within our city. Year-to-date, our homicides and non-fatal shootings are slightly up from last year. And we're still only solving approximately one out of four homicide cases a year, which is why, you know, the mayor, the Police Department, and my office, you know, we've been working together and we all agree that we should be utilizing our limited law enforcement resources on tackling serious violent and victim crimes, which is inclusive of drug distribution, which we all agree is the underbelly of violence in our city as opposed to utilizing our time, our energy, our resources on crimes that have nothing to do with public safety. So based upon the empirical data that I referenced and based on the violent crime that still exists in our city, it is wholly counterproductive to continue to prioritize low-level offenses over violent crime. I want the collective time and attention and law enforcement resources spent on solving cases where 14-year-olds are shot in broad daylight and we have no communal cooperation as opposed to utilizing the police and my prosecutors to go after someone with an open container suffering from substance use disorder. I also want to be really clear, because I know that there's been a great deal of misinformation, is that our office still prosecute drug distribution when there is an articulated, that means when they can state in their statement of probable cause or be ready to testify in court, when there is an articulated indicia of distribution, such as scales, such as distribution packaging, large amounts of cash, quantity, surveillance, and more. The standard by which we utilize is one that is based off of case law, Anawak v. State 63, Maryland App 239, which outlines that so far as the crime itself is concerned, the quantity of the CDS is not an end in itself, but it is the evidence of intent. It is the intent itself that is critical. Thus, even a large quantity of drugs might not yield a finding of intent to distribute if other circumstances indicated large private consumption. So again, throughout the past year, my office and the Police Department have successfully partnered and prosecuted drug distribution offenses without any sort of confusion and will continue to do so when there is an articulated indicia of distribution. I had the awesome opportunity, thanks to Commissioner Harrison, who allowed us to have somewhat of a, not a training session, but a briefing session with the BPD Command Staff just yesterday, where we went over this, so that, again, there is no confusion. And to be quite candid, the arrests are down 80%. We don't believe that there really ever was any sort of confusion based upon the criteria that we've set, as I've indicated. Finally, one of the most important factors that we considered in making these policies permanent is the fact that these low-level offenses that have nothing to do with public safety are being discriminantly enforced against Black and Brown people, not just in our city, but in this country. So when you consider the racial disparities that exist in the enforcement of these low-level offenses nationally, according to Drug Policy Alliance, Black people comprise 13% of the US population, but Black people comprise 29% of those arrested for drug law violations, nearly 35% of those incarcerated in state or federal prison. What's even more glaring is in the city of Baltimore. If you open up the 163-page Department of Justice report that outlined a pattern of practice of the Police Department's discriminatory enforcement in our city, they highlighted that, quote-unquote, "There are large racial disparities in BPD's enforcement of laws criminalizing possession of controlled substances." "BPD arrests African-Americans for drug possession offenses at rates far exceeding their drug use." "BPD arrests African-Americans for drug possession offenses at higher rates than similar cities." The same goes for sex work. There are large racial disparities in arrests and prosecutions throughout our city. So as the top prosecutor, one of the things that I've, I've recognized and I've, I've talked about, I've written about, is my power to be able to shape the criminal justice system and acknowledge that when we criminalize these minor offenses that have nothing to do with public safety, we expose people to needless interaction with law enforcement that for Black people in this country can often lead to a death sentence. When we consider Freddie Gray, he made eye contact with police in a high-crime neighborhood and decided to run. Sandra Bland failed to put on a turn signal. Eric Garner was allegedly selling a loose cigarette. George Floyd is alleged to have passed a counterfeit bill during a global pandemic for groceries. You think Dante, right? We're confused to this point. We think it has to do with air fresheners. So in this very moment, I, I think that it's fitting that the mayor, the Police Commissioner, and, and myself, we all agree that it's time for us as a city to reimagine policing and redefine public safety, which means we stop defaulting to just stigmatizing and criminalizing mostly people of color for behavioral health issues. We're one of the first cities in the country to all agree to treat substance use disorder, homelessness, mental illness as the public health crisis that they are, which is why my office also announced, so the only change that we've announced from our policies for the past year is that we announced the collaboration and partnerships with behavioral health organizations that will provide the expertise to address the behavioral needs of the individual as well as the community. So together, BPD and my office will refer individuals to the Baltimore Crisis Response Incorporated. That's BCI. For offenses, we're no longer prosecuting in lieu of criminalizing people for what should have always been dealt with as a public health issue. BCI has committed to not only providing 24-hour crisis response teams that will respond to these behavioral health crises in our communities, but most importantly, they're gonna provide the requisite services, right? To meet the needs of the individuals suffering from substance use disorder and homelessness and mental illness. Our office has also collaborated with Spark, Sex Workers Promoting Action, which is a drop-in center and a mobile outreach team, Swap, which is Sex Workers Outreach Project in Baltimore Safe Haven to address the behavioral health needs of those suffering from behavioral health issues. And while I recognize that this new approach to crime, where we're no longer relying on the police to respond to every social ill of society that has nothing to do with public safety, and we're no longer just defaulting to the status quo of criminalizing, as I've discussed, mostly people of color for addiction, may be different, my hope is that Baltimore will be a model for how police and prosecutors have truly redefined public safety in America. And with that, I would take any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Madam State's Attorney. You know, I, I realize we are trying to thread the needle with our approach here. We're trying to correct for some passing justices and issues that we've had with our, our policing and the way we policed in our city. And, and want to make sure that we're thoughtful in all that we do going forward. And so I have a couple of questions, and I'll, I'll then open it up to the committee to ask those questions that they may have as well. I know in our, in our meeting, maybe just two weeks ago, there were a couple of questions about what this may mean for our Police Department. So the first question I have for you is with regard to our expectations going into the future. Of course, the last year, we've, we've been ravaged by the COVID-19 pandemic, and it has changed, I believe, the way that our, the way that our whole society is operated. And I, I have to wonder if that's had an impact on crime. So with that in mind, I know as more, more folks get vaccinated, as we begin to open as a city, do you imagine or expect a resurgence in both property and violent crime once we begin to open up?
So I mean, I think that's the whole point of this, right? Is that we are saying that we want to focus on violent crime. We want to be able to utilize our resources on violent crime. We don't want to have to focus on these low-level offenses. The courts are only putting in and scheduling four cases a week, and their focus is on violent crime. And so, you know, the, this idea that, you know, there's gonna be a resurgence of, of low-level offenses, that if you look at the environmental factors of, again, 63 out of 66 major municipalities in the country where those environmental factors existed for them the same way that they did for us, and their violent crime went up, right? Ours went down. And so, you know, I am based on the several factors that I've outlined. You know, it's no public safety value, counterproductive to the limited resources that we, we have in, in law enforcement to focus on these low-level offenses. And it's been, and how, and to some extent continues to be discriminantly imposed on people of color. I have no intent to go back to ever prosecuting these low-level offenses. And that is based off of the empirical data that we just referenced.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that's part of my, my next question. Of course, our offices, I know mine, and I'm sure other councilmembers are still getting calls about these issues. And of course, we still refer them to the Police Department. With the change in, or maybe not change in policy, but newly permanent policy, you know, what are some, some of the suggestions that we have and policies that we've already begun to roll out to make sure that we're still meeting the need for these low-level crimes, addressing them? I can't, I, I can tell you, I can't go back to a constituent and say that, you know, we're not prosecuting these issues, but what are we, what do we do about it?
So, and I appreciate the question. That was part of, you know, understanding and having had these policies in place for the past year. One of the things that we have been very receptive to is the input from the community. And so that is the reason why the only new part of this policy that we've introduced are these partnerships with these behavioral health organizations that are going to provide 24-hour crisis response teams to be able to respond to meet the needs of the individual and the need, the needs of the community, right? And, and so I've been given permission to, to, to tell you that one of the things that the mayor is exploring is how we divert 911 calls for these low-level offenses to these service agencies, right? They're, they're in the process of exploring that. And that's gonna take some time, it's gonna take training, and what else? What, what, I mean, it's not just something that's gonna happen overnight, but what we do have is that commitment to be able to do it. The other thing that I, I really want to kind of emphasize is that we listen to the community as well, right? And this is one of the reasons why I, I wanted to emphasize the fact that there's been misinformation that's been put out there that we are allowing open-air drug markets. We are not allowing open-air drug markets. We are working with the police to go after drug dealers. And we have listened to the communal, communal concerns. One of the things that we were willing to, to do in being flexible with our, our policy is that one of the issues that came up was for trespassing, right? Repeat offenders, where we've made an exception to trespassing for repeat trespass offenses on the same public or private property over the preceding 12 months, or where there's a verifiable imminent safety risk. And so, you know, also including no indicia of substance use disorder. And so, you know, also including no indicia of of substance use disorder or mental illness, because again, we want to be able to treat those issues from a behavioral health perspective. So we want to meet the needs of those communities, but we don't want to continue to do what we've always done, which is to default and attempt to arrest our way out of it, but it doesn't solve anything, right? Like, if you think about it, this has been our approach, is to arrest people for being or uh having substance use disorder. We've arrested people for sex work. We've arrested people for these minor offenses for decades, and it has not made our city or our communities any safer. And so this is a different approach and that we're saying we're not going to use the criminal justice system to address the needs of the individual and the community. We're going to actually use the experts to be able to address the needs of the individuals and and those and and those of the of the community.
I I appreciate that. Um, I can tell you, if if anybody's talked to me on the campaign trail that got me here, that's what I talked about all the time. Um, so I I I really appreciate that. I think that is the way we should be moving. I think um just to paint this final point, um today, we get a we get a caller question. Um, do we have a system in place with BPD? How do how do we handle that? Do we still direct that through nine-one-one? Or um are there other resources that we should be pointing to today?
Yeah, so right now, and again, this is something that the mayor's office is exploring um and what they would, where you call nine-one-one and they'd be able to divert it directly to those service agencies. So right now, if you have those complaints, you call nine-one-one. And what the police department is doing is making those referrals um to those agencies and calling those agencies. And then those agencies are actually responding to the locations and providing the services. And so that's the way that it works. You you continue to do what you've been doing um in in calling nine-one-one, the police. And on our end, well, as well as my office, we will do what we can to refer those to the the public health and behavioral health agencies to address.
Thank you for that. A- a- any questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair, I have a a question, sir. I'm sorry.
Uh, Councilwoman Porter, and then I I see Chair Costello right after.
Sure. Um, so first, thank you so much, Madam State's Attorney, for um providing this presentation. It it gives me a lot more context. Um, and I'm so glad that your um that your office is including a public health approach related to public safety. I'm super excited about that. Um, my first question has to do with diversion programs. So over the course of the last three months, um, the District Ten, particularly Pigtown and the Brooklyn communities have seen um a high um high rate of shooting uh shootings um in in those respective communities. Can you speak to um, is your office still continuing to do the the diversion programs that I know you um that I know that you all started out with? So I just wanted to check in on that.
So, yeah, and I appreciate your 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 question, Council Councilwoman. Um, our diversion programs, uh, we have one program that we started that's modeled after um uh now Vice President Kamala Harris's um back-on-track program. Our program is called Aim to Be More. It's for first-time felony drug offenders. They go through a probationary period where they learn life skills, job training skills, they do community service. And at the end of that probationary period, they're given a job and their felony records are wiped clean. That program is very different. Um, that that's one of our, that's our signature diversionary program. We don't have a diversionary program for violent offenses. Um, so, you know, when you talk about the shootings and the increase in shootings, we are prioritizing those cases. In fact, I have the data. If Mike Chateau, if you can, right before we got on this call, one of the things that I asked them to do is to break down the shooting um numbers, because as I stated, the court has prioritized the homicides and the shootings coming into and coming out of this global pandemic. But Mike, do you have that data in front of you? If not, I can pull it up.
I I do. Um, if I can figure out how to get in here. Yes, um, and in uh, well, for two thousand twenty-one, just this year in the first few months, a hundred twenty-three cases in our Gun Violence Enforcement Division. And of course, there are other uh gun cases that come out of that. And for two thousand twenty, three hundred eighty cases in our uh Gun Violence Enforcement Division. And there are also gun cases that are in our felony units where there were six hundred forty-one cases in two thousand twenty. Some of those are gun cases. Uh, in major investigations, we had a hundred eight cases in two thousand twenty. Some of those are gun cases, narcotics, a thousand sixty-five cases. Some of those are gun cases. And in our uh Special Victims Unit, Sexual Crimes, three hundred forty-four cases in two thousand twenty, and a number of those are gun cases as well.
Thanks, Mike. I mean, I I share that information with you just to say that we take violent crime and victim crimes very serious. And so we do not have a diversionary program um in existence for these shootings and for gun crimes. I think that's where we really draw the line, understanding um the implications that it has for our city.
No, and I I think I thank you so much for that response. You know, one of the things that um I'm very concerned about is that, you know, like, like you were talking about the repeat violent offenders. I'll uh I'd say the culprits of those particular shootings um in in um those two particular neighborhoods were repeat violent offenders um that had a long track record of um having, you know, a long track record of violent crimes. Um, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're we're getting the bad guys off the street, but also um we are not uh creating um creating additional layers of negative um negative implications for the community. Because the the to to the chair's point, when constituents call me, they are really scared. They're really scared of of coming out of their neighborhoods and understandably so. So, and so um similar, similar to our briefing with the police department last week, um, I I would implore you all to, you know, as you as you discuss, to continue to work together um to to address public safety. It's 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 getting a little bit, um, it's getting a little bit out of control in my in my um opinion. And so I just want to make sure that you all are working conservatively together and, you know, utilizing our council, um, our council offices to get communication out to our constituents, but also to um, you know, to to really help you all solve these crimes for the community as well, so.
So I I appreciate your point. We are definitely working with the police department. We have been working with the police department. And like I said, thanks to the stability, uh, we have not had that in the city of Baltimore for quite some time until um Commissioner Har Harrison and and thanks to his leadership. We speak on a regular basis. My prosecutors engage with the police on a regular basis. Um, and as I stated before, that's one of the reasons, one of the factors that we considered in making this these COVID policies permanent. We should be focusing on violent crime and utilizing our resources for violent crime. You know, one of the things that we did um in two thousand and nineteen when we came out and stopped prosecuting marijuana is that we were able to redistribute our resources in a way in which we were able to take some of our prosecutors out of the district court and then to fully staff and add additional prosecutors to our homicide division. So that is our approach, and I think that that is a mutually agreed-upon approach from both the police department as well as the mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam State's Attorney, and thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to ask the question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Um, Councilwoman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam State's Attorney. Thanks for being here today with your team. Um, I want to ask the same question that I posed to the police department uh a couple of weeks ago during the hearing in this committee. If I or anyone uh were to be walking around with three kilos of drugs, um, there's a reasonable assumption that uh I would be arrested versus if I'm walking around with three grams, which is clearly for for personal use, um, there's a reasonable assumption that I would not be arrested. Um, what I'm struggling with is understanding where the line is drawn. And I heard you talk a little bit in your presentation about um intent versus intent to distribute versus intent for personal use. So can can you help quantify for me? Because I wasn't, I I'm still confused.
So the one thing I will say is that this is not something that can be quantified, right? And that was articulated in in the case law that I cited. Uh, I'll just state for you, so far as the crime itself is concerned, the quantity of the drugs is not an end in it in in itself, but it is evidence of intent. It is the intent itself that is critical. And thus, even a large quantity of drugs might not yield a finding of intent to distribute if other circumstances indicated large private consumption. What we're attempting to do with this um articulated indicia of distribution standard is requiring that the police are able, and through their skills and their expertise, if they believe that it's consistent with drug distribution, they should be able to speak to and articulate in their statement of probable cause and be able to testify as to why that amount of drugs um is consistent with distribution. And usually, if you have three kilos of anything, it's coupled with something else, depending on the circumstances. And so it would usually be coupled with distribution packaging, maybe baggies, large amounts of cash, the quantity, clearly, surveillance, any sort of hand-to-hands that you are observing. And so, again, this is based upon the totality of the circumstances. And so just saying, giving it a quantity is not going to be sufficient, right? Like, saying, okay, if you have fifteen pieces, then you're good. If you have fifteen pieces, you're uh more. If you're sixteen, you're not. Like, that's not the standard legally that we um are supposed to conform to. And so that's why this standard has, again, been one in which we have utilized when we stopped prosecuting marijuana possession. And those numbers have significantly, the the arrest numbers on that have have significantly decreased, um, if not at all, um, based off the last data that I looked at. And then I do think it's 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 worth stating again that the police department have been conducting this policy for over a year without confusion. And that is indicative of the fact that there's an eighty percent decrease in drug arrests. So I I understand that it's not, um, you know, it doesn't give you a quantity, but legally, we we believe that, based on the case law, that articulated indicia of distribution is something that we have attempted to clarify with the police.
And while I don't necessarily agree or fully understand the response, I certainly appreciate it because it appears to be well thought out. Um, that being said, I think, let me ask a a very simple question. If if someone is arrested for intent to distribute, is your office going to prosecute?
Yes, we are going to prosecute if someone is able, if the police are able to write why this is possession with intent to distribute distribute drugs. And usually, that comes with, as I indicated, large amounts of cash. There are other circumstances that would in would would be um indicative of that being distribution. So this is a legal standard, and I don't know, maybe you're you're not able to understand because of the legal sort of um standard that we've set that we're following based upon case law. But I can tell you that it's based on the totality of the circumstances, one of which they need to be able to articulate why it's distribution. That's the only standard by which we would be be able to proceed on either possession with intent to distribute or distribution.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I have a few more questions on this. I'll I'll wait until I cycle back or until you cycle back.
Sure, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I want to acknowledge, um, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Glover and Councilwoman Ramos, who've answered the meeting. They answered a long time ago, but just want to acknowledge you both. Um, any other questions from um from some of the committee? Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam State's Attorney. Um, I do want to say that, you know, the last couple of years, I've asked Commissioner Harrison if he would commit to ending the war on drugs and refunding drug units. He said no, with some nuance. Um, but I do commend you for taking what I consider to be a bold step in this direction. We know that the war on drugs has been, as you said, prosecuted in a way that's been classist and racist and hasn't worked, hasn't increased safety, saying it's the right move. That said, I'm curious if you could dig a little bit more into, um, like Chairman Conway was saying, sort of what comes next for communities? Um, what are the resources that we can bring to bear? What are the partnerships? I've heard groups like Safe Haven mention, and I think specifically about one of the communities I represent, which is Highland Town, where recently we've seen violence. But traditionally, it's been a lot of sex work and drug use. And I've been working really hard with neighbors to move away from an incarceration approach and toward harm reduction, um, and to bring groups like Safe Haven to bear, um, to provide outreach. So I'm curious, as we transition from arresting folks who are substance addicted, um, what do, like, what do you see as coming next from that public health perspective to support people, um, to gain recovery or to um, you know, lead a more fulfilling life?
So, and I appreciate your question. Uh, uh, again, this was the only sort of part of our announcement that was new. And it is based upon understanding and recognizing that we have to meet the needs of these individuals. We want them to stop frequenting our communities. Um, and we want them to be able to address the the needs of that individual, depending on the behavioral health needs of that individual, but also meeting the needs of the communities, right? So right now, if you were to call the police, the police for, you know, sex work or for um substance use disorder, not for drug dealing, right? Drug dealing is something different. We're going to prosecute that. But for someone who is is suffering from substance use disorder, the way that would work, you could call the police and the police will respond, but they're going to refer that individual. They will pick up the phone and they're going to call the Baltimore Crisis Response Incorporated, right? They're going to get their information. The 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 response team will actually be there to provide the services that are needed for those individuals. When you you ask what other organizations, as I talked about it and addressed it a little bit, which was Sex Workers Promoting Action. This is a drop-in center and a mobile out outreach team that they have already started to frequent communities and attempt to address the needs of sex workers in these communities. Baltimore Safe Haven, again, you're very familiar with them. They have already been out there doing the work. And so what I see in the future is very um promising. As I stated, I got permission from the mayor to say that one of the things that we're going to be doing is to treat all of these issues as a behavioral health issue and public crisis, health crisis that they are, and that they will be looking to automatically divert, right? So not just relying on the particular officer to pick up the phone and to call the Baltimore Crisis and um Crisis Response Incorporated, but these calls would be automatically diverted to these particular organizations and agencies for them to respond. And so right now, that's the way, that's the way that it it exists. The Baltimore, the patrol officer is going to call and say, hey, you know, at this location, we need some service here. We're going to make this referral of this individual. And then we're, again, meeting the needs of that individual and ensuring that we're meeting the needs, hopefully, of that community, because what has happened before is that we arrest them, they are let out within twenty-four hours because this is not a public safety risk and they're essentially back at what they were doing before. So this is a very different approach, um, and we're going to have flyers and information. The other thing that I failed to mention was that we intend to do town halls um in every police district. My office intends to do town halls, just like we're doing right now, where we open it up to the community. And in attendance will be the researcher from Johns Hopkins that has provided all of the data that we relied on. Well, some of the data, some of it, most of it is BPD data and D P S E S data. And also, um, you know, the the sex worker organizations and B C R I will be there to answer any other additional sort of questions.
I appreciate that. Um, and I would say that the more you all can partner at a really micro level with communities on the ground, with council offices, with groups like the Southeast CDC or Greater Bay Brook in South Baltimore, I think the more community can feel like they have a real voice in shaping those interventions. Because, you know, what may work in West Baltimore may not work. Because, you know, what may work in West Baltimore may not work in East Baltimore or South Baltimore. But the more folks feel like they're really at the table, I think the more successful we're going to be in the long run.
I agree with you, Councilman, and so we're going to need your support in that endeavor. That's one of the reasons why, and what we are going to provide before the end of this call is just an outline of the dates that we've selected for each of the police districts in which we will be conducting town halls. And as I stated, we will have those service providers on each of those calls virtually to be able to respond to those issues and those concerns. The other thing that we, I spoke with the command staff at the Baltimore Police Department on Monday, and one of the things that they asked for are like flyers for the information that they can be able to give to folks as they're out on the street and to the patrol officers. So we agree, but we're going to, we're going to need your support in that endeavor, all of the council's support in that endeavor and ensuring that people understand and fully comprehend what this new approach to public safety really means.
Happy to support, would appreciate, and do appreciate your office's continued support at our monthly Highland Town task force meetings. I know that Deputy Bledsoe has been there a few times, but, you know, I think, again, to me, moving in a direction toward harm reduction or what we have previously considered crimes that are really in the public health arena, I think is the right move. I think how we get there is the trick, but appreciate it. Thank you, Madam State's Attorney, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from the committee? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for joining us, Madam's Attorney and your team. I had a couple of questions about the, sort of, the scope of how this is really playing out. So one of the questions I had was, are you, is your office, obviously, from a data perspective, are you tracking cases that are declined or that are flagged? If there are repeat offenders, and I think you mentioned, you hinted at some of that when it, as it related to the trespassing piece, that there's like a repeated individual, that kind of thing. How are you all tracking the things that aren't being taken up right now? Or are you tracking things that aren't being taken up right now as far as arrests that may still be made, or if the police, you know, aren't providing enough evidence of drug trafficking at the onset, you know, but they're, you know, just let us know, I guess, what that communication looks like, what that tracking and data looks like on that, and just so we can have a better picture of the full scope of what's coming to your office from BPD.
So the way, and I appreciate your question, Councilman. In general, the way that we track, there are three mechanisms by which we capture cases that we decide to decline. We do that based off of pre-arrest investigations, right, that don't amount to evidentiary to a crime. And so we capture that data not through every single one of our divisions, but through some of the vertical prosecution units, such as homicide and special victims, right? There's not enough evidence to be able to proceed on a trial. We capture that data, we say, BPD, we need you to go back and get additional evidence, so we're declining the charge. So yes, we have some of those numbers. Then the second way that we capture data is that we do what's called release without charges, right? And this is where an arrest is made, and we make a determination based upon the law, or we make a determination based upon our policies that we're not going to proceed on that case. And so that's called RWLC, Release Without Charges. That person is actually arrested, and then we release them. So last year, there were about four hundred and sixty-nine people where there was an arrest, where we actually released those individuals without charges, okay? And then the third way that we capture that information is through our NO-PROS data, right, where we say, and this is the vast majority of the cases that we decline, and it's captured on our website. We put out this transparent number on a monthly basis prior to COVID, where we were capturing not only our conviction rate, but also the NO-PROS data, which would tell you why we're getting rid of cases, the number of cases that we're getting rid of. And again, that's the majority of those cases, and it could be anything from a legal reason to witnesses not showing up. For the past, prior twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen, about thirty percent of the cases that we had to NO-PROS or to dismiss had to do with a lack of victim witness cooperation, right? And so those would be inclusive in that number as well.
You said that's online? Okay.
Yes, it's online, it's on our website. It's on our website. And if you have specific, like, requests about particularly, again, it's for the pre-arrest investigations, we don't capture it in every single one of our divisions, only the vertical prosecution units. The vertical prosecution units are the units where at the outset of a case, you're working with the police department, my prosecutors are working with the police department to solve those cases. The moment somebody dies, my prosecutor is assigned to a case, they're working with the detectives to work that case, right? If there's an allegation of sexual assault, my prosecutors are working that case with the detective pre-charging. But we don't do that in every single one of our divisions because not all of our divisions have that same vertical prosecution model.
Got it, okay. And I'll send over some more specifics around, because we, and we talked about this a little bit, but just had more questions around the issue of sexual assault, domestic violence, as well as gun crimes, and just trying to get a better idea of what's moving forward, what isn't.
Well, we have a little bit of that data because you asked about it before. I can just tell you that we did see an uptick, as I indicated, in domestic violence, in special victim cases. But our data given, we reviewing, that we reviewed from last year, you were actually asking about those cases that we declined. And in twenty year-to-date, I tell you, we've only declined eleven out of fifty cases, and this is pre-arrest, right? Where thus far, we've said, BPD, we need you to do some additional evidence. That's eleven out of fifty year-to-date. In twenty twenty, we declined nineteen cases out of a hundred and sixty-six pre-arrest investigations.
Okay.
Then we proceeded upon nineteen of them. We said there, we needed additional evidence.
Okay. And the second line of question, Mr. Chair, was, what data can you provide? I was excited to see the anonymous tip line and hotline coming up, because we know oftentimes, and I know my colleagues who probably share this exact same thing, oftentimes, people may not feel comfortable calling nine-one-one or reporting certain things, so they actually call my office or call me. So I was excited to see the billboards start popping up. Could you provide us data or just an overview of the hotline that's been created, what type of call volume is coming in, what types of calls are you getting? Just a little bit more detail on how that, on how that's going.
Sure. So one of the things that we are very happy with, with regard to the campaign, we've had over thirteen million impressions. That's all the billboards, the commercials, the social media, which also emphasize a tip line. We are not happy about the tip line, though, that component, and we are reassessing that component of the campaign because we're not sure if people are picking up on it as much as they should. And again, that might be in light of the pandemic. But what we have thus far, we have calls that have been primarily focused on domestic violence. That tip line is not exclusive to domestic violence calls. When I go into the communities and community association meetings, one of the things that I emphasize is if you have an open-air drug market and you want to be able to provide an anonymous tip, what we're going to do is you leave that information, we're going to then work with the police department to develop long-term strategies so that we're not just relying on that one anonymous tip, right? We're going to get corroborative information to develop long-term strategies on how to address the issues in your community. That has not necessarily happened thus far. What we've seen, and we launched this in October of last year, but we've seen there's been, the calls are accepted twenty-four hours a day. It's kind of like a voicemail that's set up where we will respond to base upon what the concern or the issue is. And like I said, the majority of these calls have been for domestic violence. We've been able to respond to the needs of certain individuals, and I have them all documented, and how and what we did in each of the cases. But a lot of them had to do with DV, and I don't want to necessarily go through the intricacies of what's been revealed, but a lot of them had to do with service and not as much about a tip to solving crime as much as meeting the needs and the services. And as I stated, I think overall, it's been a success because if you look at the number of victims and witnesses that we've been able to service, they have drastically increased. As I indicated, we're servicing thirty-four times the number of victims and witnesses than we did in two thousand and fifteen. But this tip line is something that we have to kind of figure out a way that people know that it's not just, you know, in order to get, or to provide or ask for service around domestic violence, but also to be able to provide us with intel and information, which is different from BPD. But what we thought was really important for us to do is to distinguish ourselves from BPD, because some people may, you know, not feel comfortable providing an anonymous tip on information to BPD, and may feel comfortable providing that to us, or some people may not feel comfortable providing it to us and want to give that to BPD. And so that's why there's, there are two separate lines, to give them two opportunities to be able to assist us in our crime fight.
Mr. Chair, can I ask them one more, just quick follow-up on that?
If you don't mind, oh, is this a follow-up to that point, or kind of point, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to know the, I guess, you mentioned the impressions for the hotline. Where, I guess, what are, what is the outreach method? I've seen the billboards, what other tools are being used to communicate? That was just a follow-up on that, on that direct point.
So we have the billboards, we have commercials that we've run, we've done radio ads, we've done a great deal of social media, and what we attempted to do, and this is the second phase, because we initially launched this in twenty nineteen, and we used real victims of crime in Baltimore City that are telling compelling stories about the services that we've provided to them and how it's assisted them in their pursuit of justice, or have assisted them in some aspect of the trauma that they were dealing with. And so it's incredibly powerful if you listen to these stories, and if you go to Together, You're TogetherWeAreStronger.com, it directs you, you are diverted directly to our website where we can provide you, where we offer, you know, court accompaniment and, you know, relocation services, and we assist you in doing threat assessments and, you know, when it comes to applying for certain funds for certain, you know, crimes that have taken place. So that's essentially what the campaign is all about. And the tip line actually came about after the, we were, it was recommended during our Witness Intimidation Workshop that operated out of my office from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. It was created in response to a grant that we received from Aequitas and partners that allowed for our office to develop strategic plans that would help address community trust. And so one of the recommendations was that we would create our own sort of, you know, anonymous tip line outside of BPD, as well as this largest sort of campaign, so that we can inform the public that we're here for them and that, you know, when you, you're the most important stakeholder in all of this, and when you come forward, we're able to achieve justice and to make our community safer. So that's where it came out of, and that's what, hopefully, you're seeing. And we got that grant through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll hold my questions for the next round.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Glover, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam State's Attorney, and thank you to the staff at the Office of the State's Attorney. I want to piggyback a little bit off of what Councilmen, Chris Burnett was talking about for sex workers and things of that nature. How would your policy help build trust with sex workers and drug users that want to report crime?
So, I mean, one of the things that I think are incredibly important to understand about sex work is that it's an extremely complicated sort of issue. And so what our policy does not preclude us from prosecuting trafficking, human trafficking, and sexual assault and physical assault, or the purchase of sex from minors or trafficked persons. The charges that the policy covers are really misdemeanors under state law. And when sex workers, sex workers fear prosecution, they're significantly less likely to report serious crimes such as sex assault, right, and physical assault or human trafficking. And so those are the crimes that we, as an office, are more committed to pursuing, and we want sex workers to be able to report those types of crimes to law enforcement without fear that they'll, that will somehow turn around and prosecute them, right? Like, there's, we want to go after the human traffickers. And so before making this policy permanent, we consulted extensively with experts from the sex work community, and the intent of the policy was to, in essence, make them safer. My office still prosecutes, again, human trafficking as human trafficking, you know, we've had human trafficking prosecutors, and we continue to have them, and we'll continue to engage BPD and relevant task forces on that important issue. But with engaging sex workers, we feel that meeting the needs, the behavioral health needs of those individuals are far more important to get the bigger fish, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it explains a lot. And I'm just going to piggyback off some things you had said. How has your policy been received, like nationally? What criminal experts have you guys talked with?
So, I mean, if you look at the data, and one of the things that we did, and this is based off the data, we're not just, you know, doing this and pulling this out of nowhere. We did this based on the several factors that I outlined in the data. We've worked with Johns Hopkins, we have the best public health experts in the entire nation, again, to, we consulted with them to arrive at these policies. And then nationally, I think that it has been well-received in that, like, if you look at what we're dealing with right now in this country, as we're watching the Derek Chauvin trial, I think it's highly relevant. As I indicated before, if you look at the number of black people that are dying at the hands of police, because there's an expectation that they're supposed to respond to every social ill of society that has nothing to do with public safety, I think that it has been well-received, not just, you know, from a public health, local perspective, but nationally, people get it. And that's an approach that, you know, some places have taken, and there's been a report that recently has come out out of Boston. Michael Collins, did you want to speak to that a little bit? He's my Strategic Policy and Planning Director.
Yeah, we had a lot of consultation with other offices, and just around the time, you know, there are other offices that are following some of our policies on other jurisdictions, and Boston was one of them, and they had done a multi-year report showing that when they stopped prosecuting misdemeanor offenses, it actually led to reduction in crime in, for felonies. And the hypothesis is that, you know, when we wrap people up in the criminal justice system for these minor offenses like drug possession and prostitution, and you get the scarlet letter of a criminal record, or you spend time in jail, and therefore you lose your job, you can't get a job, you can't get access to student loans, and that then increases recidivism. And that was something, actually, as Mrs. Mosby mentioned, was borne out in our Johns Hopkins data, where these individuals who had their cases dismissed, when we tracked them, as she said, it was a zero-point-zero-four percent recidivism rate. And so by keeping these individuals out of the criminal justice system, it's actually having an impact in other areas as well.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I got to ask my final question, if that's possible. Okay, thank you. Given what we've seen in the last week with traffic stops, how does your policy fit into the discussion of police killings?
So I think I touched on it a little bit. I think when it comes to prosecutorial discretion, one of the things that I wrote last year at the outset of the George Floyd killing, is that prosecutors have to acknowledge and recognize that when we are, you know, prosecuting these low-level offenses, and we're not, that have nothing to do with public safety for black people and people of color in this country, that can easily lead to a death sentence. And so I think it's highly relevant to what's happening, not just not just from experience and personal experience here in Baltimore City, but, but nationally. And so, you know, I, I think that it's timely and I think that this new approach is something that has been well received because it's a, a different, it's a different approach that is a model, again, for redefining what public safety looks like in, in our country.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope I have a question still later on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilman Ramos, do you have any questions? Seeing no questions from Councilman Ramos, we'll go back around. Uh, my, my next question is something that, you relate to something that you alluded to earlier um with regard to the change in the past on um prosecuting around marijuana usage. Um, how has this policy changed the way we allocate resources within the State's Attorney's Office and our ability to um focus on some of maybe the uh um higher need or more violent issues? Has that changed anywhere in the way that we um staff the office?
So that's something that we're going to be assessing, right? When we get back to court, um, right now, as I indicated before, those resources are major um, and we have to prioritize. When we came out with the marijuana policies, again, we were able to redistribute resources. We were able to take some of our prosecutors out of district court. We were able to fully staff and increase the number of prosecutors in our homicide division. And I think it's also really worth noting, um, you know, when it comes to like the number of homicide cases that my prosecutors have, it, it's, it's out of the ordinary, right? Like, out of my, we have about eighteen prosecutors um in our homicide division. And on average, they have about fifteen charged cases, fifteen active investigations, about six to eight post convictions, and on average, about thirty inactive investigations. That is about eighty-seven cases. The national average for a homicide prosecutor that you should have is twenty. So fifty-seven active cases, eighty-seven altogether, like, that is outrageous. And so one of the things that we are going to be reevaluating as we get back into court is what we can do to assist that load and to really be able to, uh, from, from even a misdemeanor perspective. You know, my, my prosecutors are able to vote, focus on victim crimes. They have the time now, you know. Typically, we prosecute between thirty and forty thousand cases a year in Baltimore City. And a majority of those cases are these low-level offenses that had nothing to do with public safety. So now my prosecutors, the cases that we are moving forward on are victim crimes that they have time to reach out to their victims, they can have time to build their cases and work with the detectives in, in a homicide from the lower-level misdemeanor cases all the way through general trial and, and in the homicide, right? Like, there, you add additional prosecutors, they're able to really do the type of work and build substantive cases along with the police department that we need in order to, to make our city safer.
Thank you. And my, my other question is um unrelated, slightly different. But uh with regard to bail and bail review, um, have you guys thought any about uh bail review and how to address bail's review uh in light of the pandemic and um folks' need?
Yes, no, definitely. One of the things that we did and I, I highlighted when we first talked was to say, not only have we are not prosecuting these offenses, um, but not only do we dismiss these cases, but we, we refined our approach, right? Twice in, in the global pandemic to, to ask for, only to focus only on individuals that pose public safety risk. We, we weren't necessarily doing that before, right? We were considering whether they were flight risk, we were considering, you know, the facts and and we still consider the facts and circumstances of the case. But really, the one thing that we're really concerned about, and, and that's still in existence as we do bail reviews, the court is not quite operational, is that we are still only really focusing on those individuals that we believe pose a public safety risk and should be in those facilities and behind bars.
Awesome. Thank you on that, um, Madam State's Attorney. Any other questions from the committee? Uh, Councilman Burnett?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Count, hell, I got you right after.
Perfect. Um, so, uh, sorry, I'm trying to see what I already, what we've already covered. Uh, oh, so, uh, the uh for shootings. Uh, can you walk us through uh the uh relocation protocol? Um, the work that you all are doing to protect people who uh want to testify uh in support for uh victims and witnesses post-prosecution? I, I know that you've uh um have a pretty robust uh program. Could you, could you give us a sort of a walkthrough on what that looks like?
Sure. So for shooting victims, the protocol um is that once there's an arrest that has been made, the State's Attorney's Office takes over the case um from BPD and we continue to provide services, right? If a victim witness is being threatened, you're automatically kind of assigned a victim witness advocate. Um, that advocate will send a relocation packet to the relocation team. That relocation packet includes a threat assessment from, from the detective, um, a copy of the police report and the State Attorney's Office Witness Assistance Referral. Um, so once this packet is received, the State's Attorney Relocation Staff immediately contacts the victim and the witness to determine the threat level. So what you have before is the police are making that assessment. We work with the police to establish what they need to ask in that assessment, but then we're bringing them in, right? Um, the relocation staff will, will contact the victim and witness and determine the threat level. Once the severity of the threat has been determined, the relocation staff is able to develop a plan, right? Like a comprehensive plan to assist the victim and the witness. If the victim and the witness is in imminent danger, he or she will be offered temporary safe housing. And we do this, as I indicated, um, I'll give you the stats in a moment, but we give the temporary safe housing. While in safe housing, the relocation staff will assist the victim and witness in finding permanent housing as well, right? So if there's an immediate threat, we take him and we'll put them in the, in temporary housing. And then we're also working to try to figure out a permanent situation for the individual. And unlike the feds, the, the, the State Attorney's Office does not have the resources to provide protection to um every single person, but every person that has applied and we do this assessment for, we do. Um, and then they will testify. Uh, approximately eighty percent of the victims and witnesses who are referred receive relocation services prior to testifying. Oh, okay, I see what your point was at. I'm sorry. What we're saying, unlike the feds, we don't have the ability to provide permanent sort of um constant and continual um funding. But we do up until and, and sometimes beyond them testifying, right? So our goal is to try to put them in a permanent situation where they can be self-sufficient and self-sustaining and that it's not just relying on our office beyond their testimony, if that makes sense.
Oh, me? Uh, no, that makes sense. Um, the second question I had, um, uh, again, we'll, we covered. Um, and sorry, just a, a quick follow up. I think you, you mentioned in the la- my last round of questioning that the null price information was on the website. So all of that's there, because that was my, my second, my second question was on that. Okay, so I'll, I'll pull that data in, in follow up. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Chair Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so Madam State's Attorney, I, I um, I don't understand the legal standard. Um, I'm not a lawyer. Um, but thankfully, overwhelming majority of my constituents are not lawyers either, so they don't understand the legal standard. Um, and what I'm hoping to be able to accomplish is get some clarification um around, you know, what'll get prosecuted versus what won't. So what I'm going to take back to constituents, and it's a recurring theme that I'm hearing, um, not just in downtown or on the South Baltimore Peninsula, but in Midtown and in Central West Baltimore, um, is what you've shared, that if there's a, a crime that has a victim, um, you're going to prosecute it. And if it's related to drug dealing with intent to distribute, um, that you're going to prosecute it. Um, I do have one case I'm going to discuss, and I'll certainly reach out to you um offline in the coming week or so. Um, and hopefully we can chat about that and you can help me
Absolutely.
the circumstances, um, and we'll go from there. Um, again, I do appreciate you and your, your entire senior team being here today. I, I maintain that I still have some confusion, and I think that a lot of folks have some confusion. So whatever your office can do um in terms of public outreach and communication to help clear up that confusion would certainly be, certainly be helpful. And I think the recurring theme, theme that you've heard today from the committee is that the council wants to help communicate that to clear up that, that confusion that exists between, um, you know, what SAO does, what BPD does, and what all our other, you know, supporting agencies are doing. So, um, certainly have the city's service to help communicate that, that message, so.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Councilman. Um, and I hope that I, I, my, my goal was to dispel any sort of confusion. So I apologize if it, I made it even more confusing. The fact of the matter is, my office is prosecuting drug dealers. My office is prosecuting, um, y- y- you know, drug distributors. Um, any sort of network of individuals that are having open-air drug markets and are exchanging drugs, we are prosecuting. And so I, I really wanted to ensure that you understood that we've had that um, that briefing session with Baltimore Police Department. And the police department, uh, we, we've made it very clear so that there was no sort of confusion. And so I, I do point to the fact that we've already been doing this policy for a year. Um, and we've successfully partnered with the police who have done this sort of approach for a year without confusion, um, which is indicative of the eighty percent decrease in drug arrests. But the articulated indicia of distribution is a legal terminology and a legal basis um by which we have based this policy. And so, you know, that's what we've explained to the police department. And we haven't thus far um been, had gotten any sort of pushback. I think that there was confusion initially because there was misinformation about whether or not we were prosecuting drug dealers. And the fact of the matter is, which you can tell your constituents, is that we are. And the police are now aware on how we can ensure that they are, are taken off the streets of Baltimore.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, uh, next up, I see Councilman Glover. Do you have another question, Councilman?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have this last question. Uh, so, Madam State's Attorney, uh, what can you or your office do to dispel the fear that are going around in the neighborhoods where they fear that crime may increase because of your policies? And what can we do as an office, the city council, to help put that message out in the community? And also, can we, is there a way where we can combine the Baltimore City Police Department and you guys to kind of push that message out at once? Because you're hearing, you know, conversations from the police department, they're hearing whatever it is, the council, whatever we know, whatever we're learning. And what is it can, that you can uh share with the community to reduce the fear in the neighborhoods?
So, Councilman Glover, I think that that's a really great question. I think that's why we have asked to do this public briefing for the city council so that you all are made aware of what our actual policies are. Um, and then, you know, when you ask what, what you all can do, we're going to need your assistance. Um, we know that this is a very different approach. And again, you have some folks that are gonna um to resort to fear mongering. The data does not suggest that these individuals are responsible for violent crime. We want to be able to focus on violent crime. And we believe by, you know, prioritizing violent crime over these low-level offenses, we'll be able to do so. And so that message is one of the reasons why we're having the public hearing that we're having today. Because that's not necessarily that's what, it's being put out by certain media outlets. Um, and that's, that's more intentional. But we are also doing these, these town halls in every single one of your districts. And so we would just ask that you be supportive. And if you have constituents in your particular community that have concerns or questions, you know, based off of the misinformation that's being reported in the media, please direct them to these town halls. And what we'll do before we get off this call is we will publish the dates and the, the, the times that we intend to be in each of the police districts. Um, we, uh, the, the police department has been very cooperative in allowing us to talk with their command staff. So we, we have invited them to partake in, in, in these town halls as well. Um, and then, for the most part, I think that, that's a beginning, right? I, I think understanding, and if you guys have any other additional questions or concerns, my team and I would be happy to be able to respond to your, your, your concerns if you just reach out to our office. Um, am I missing anything from, from, from this, guys, from that question, from my team members? I know that we have a youth forum tonight. We, it's a, a, a town hall that we're trying to do for, for some of the young people so that they can be heard. Is there anything else that I'm missing, guys?
I would just say one thing about the possession issue. We don't advertise the pieces or what's needed in terms of a possession. Because if, for example, if we said ten, then the drug dealer's going to be carrying nine. So in terms of answering the question um to Councilman Costello about possession with intent to distribute and distribution, um, that's why, why Madam State's Attorney gave you the case law to show that, you know, we can't tell you ten pieces. We can't tell you fifteen pieces. You have to look at the totality of the situation and the intent. That was, that's all I would add, Madam State's Attorney.
Anything else?
Okay, so when, all right, so when analyzing the data, you know, a year ago, is there anything that suggests that we should go back to the old approach?
So I think it's a great question, Councilman, and I would, I would argue no. I mean, I, I, looking at the data, as I indicated before, what it has shown and what it has proven is that there is no public safety value. And I don't believe ever any sort of public safety value in prosecuting these low-level offenses. Yet we've always kind of done the same thing over and over again in fear of, of crime going up. Well, guess what? We've arrested these people for decades and crime has gone up. And so, you know, no public safety value, as I indicated before, it's counterproductive. It's very limited resources we have, which we want to focus on violent crime, and it's being discriminately enforced. And so we have to make sure that when we have laws that are being discriminately enforced against people of color that you can, from my office perspective, will never sort of be complicit in that type of engagement. And so, no, from, we want to focus on violent crime. We want to be able to, as I indicated when I, in the beginning of this presentation, I want police and prosecutors responding to the fourteen-year-old that was shot in broad daylight, not to Rogan Vagabond, a homeless guy that, you know, is, is, is trying to survive and has all these behavioral health sort of issues and substance use disorder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Last thing I say is, police officers are not social workers.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Um, Madam State's Attorney, one thing I think, um, I'm, I'm not sure if you, if you do this already, um, but if you have a fact sheet or something that we can share to clarify this policy for folks that may or may not be able to make the, um, the, um, the, um, the district meetings, um, I, I'd be happy, certainly my office, to, to put that information out to clarify what this means and what it does not mean. Um, but I think we could all use that a, a, as a council.
I think that's a great idea, and we are open to that, yes. I, I think that we can definitely put together a fact sheet as well as the, the flyer for the services for the um behavioral health organizations that we're working with.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. Um, any other questions?
One thing, uh, Mr. Chair, just one thing.
Uh, let, let me, let me make sure before we jump to, i- is it related to that point?
It, it's kind of, it was kind of sort of, I, it's just a thought. Because like, uh, you know, I just want to make sure that the police department is working with the State's Attorney's Office because of the fact that I'm going off what happened in my district yesterday. Some guys just shooting craps. I need the police officer to just make a presence because what happened is that from those guys shooting craps, somebody came through and shot four individuals. Like, where can we, and, and that's a low, you know, a low violent crime. Like, it's a misdemeanor, if it's a crime at all, they're shooting dice, but- But it was them shooting dice that led up to these guys coming to, I don't know if they was going to rob them or whatever the case may be. But I just need it where as though the police know that, even though this is a low-level crime, that we still need them to show, I guess, be more approachable to these individuals, because it was happening again like last night. You know, somebody came past and shot, you know, shot at four individuals, shot them, all four of them. They didn't die, but they were shot. So I just want to prevent that from happening in the future. And that I don't want it to seem like, you know, we're allowing individuals on these corners to do whatever, you know, they want to do.
So I think it's a fair point. I think what we've indicated is that we're working with the police department and our focus is on violent crime and allowing us to be able to, you know, go after the shooters and what some have called in the past, trigger pullers and homicides and solving some of these cold cases and being able to do all of that, that's the reason why we've come out with the policy. One of the factors that we considered in coming out with the policy that we did.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we just wanted to follow up on something you just mentioned, Madam State's Attorney, about the sort of cold cases or long-term cases. Can you talk about the work that your office does in collaboration with homicide detectives to basically try and resolve some of these longstanding investigations that maybe have stretched over a year or more? And we often, actually, we've had a few that have popped up. I want to say, you know, we'll get a closure that comes a year later or two years later. Can you speak to what that collaborative space looks like to try and resolve some of the long-term cases that have sort of stretched out over a significant period of time?
So as I indicated before, when homicide takes place, my prosecutors are assigned right away. One of the things that we do is that we created a process by which, when I first took office, we kept receiving phone calls from, you know, moms and next-of-kin people who have lost loved ones and they hadn't heard from their detective in a long period of time. And so, understanding that that's unacceptable, one of the things, and this is again a culture shift that we implemented in my office, we started, we assigned a victim witness advocate, we assigned the prosecutor, and in essence, reached out to the next-of-kin right away. We send out letters, we invite those folks to come in so that we can, even before there's a person of interest that has been identified, we let them know that this is your detective, this is your victim witness advocate, this is your attorney. This is what the legal process is going to look like, right? And if you have additional information or if you have additional evidence, this is who you should contact. This is who you should inform. And so that process didn't exist before, but now it does. And this is, oh, this is your victim witness advocate and family bereavement, you know, therapist that will help you through your grief counseling. That didn't exist before. Now it does. The other thing that we do is that we work, as I said, this is a vertical prosecution unit. So we work right away with the police department. But to be quite honest with you and candid with you, my homicide prosecutors, my eighteen prosecutors, we have fifty-seven active cases and about thirty inactive cases per prosecutor, right? And so this is a problem. This is a huge problem, one in which we have to be able to address. Because unfortunately, what we do is we establish like an action plan for the police, and we ask them to follow up, and if there's no additional leads and we don't have sufficient information in that case, and it becomes inactive. And so what we have to do is to be able to redirect some resources. And so that's even more of a reason. Another factor, major, one of the major factors that we considered in this policy is that, hey, let's stop utilizing these limited resources or these low-level offenses. Let's make sure that our homicide unit is fully staffed. Let's make sure that these numbers decrease and we're able to, you know, impress upon the police when we have to, to follow up. And we don't have eighty-seven cases when on average you're supposed to have twenty, right? Am I missing anything, Mike Shatzell?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think you are. The problem is a resource problem. We continue to actively investigate cases as long as there is information to investigate. As we, you know, the vertical prosecution that Mrs. Mosby is talking about involves assigning a prosecutor to a case as soon as the crime takes place, having the prosecutor go to the scene, having the prosecutor go down to police headquarters while interviews are taking place so she can assist with planning of the interview, making sure all proper questions are asked. And then an investigative plan is drawn up between the prosecutor and the detectives. If at some point, as unfortunately happens in some cases, all the leads are investigated, there's no more information to investigate, those places, those cases are not closed out. They go into inactive status, and we don't have the resources to just randomly revisit inactive cases. However, for any inactive case, if there is additional evidence, if somebody else comes forward or some lab work comes in, or as happens not infrequently, somebody arrested in connection with some unrelated crime claims that they have evidence relating to this homicide, then we get together with the detective, we come up with a revision to our investigative plan, and we investigate that new information. But once the investigation has been exhausted without developing sufficient evidence to bring charges, we don't have the resources to simply revisit it from time to time in the absence of new information being developed.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from the committee, we're going to move into the testimony. So for public testimony, committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. If you're connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker will must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot be identified and cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you're unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are muted. Please state your name at the beginning of the testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back and to provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, please use the raise hand function that's located on the bottom right of your panel if you're logged into this meeting. I don't see any testimony. All right, we'll check the phone lines. No testimony on the phone lines. With that, Madam State's Attorney, do you have any closing statements that you'd like to make?
No, I don't. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be able to present for all of you. Again, I ask that we get your cooperation and support in ensuring that we're properly informing the constituents in Baltimore City to what the policies are and what they aren't. And we will be sure to publish that information. We thought it was a great idea. I will have a fact sheet for you. We will try to distribute that information. And with that, I believe my team should have the dates, and we can get that published for you as well. I really wanted to be able to give that to you all before the end of this call. I believe we have it almost certain, right, Zai? We have that? Zion?
He's probably figuring it out if you ask him.
Well, I know we have those dates, so we will most certainly get you the dates so that we can publish them.
Yeah, that's great. We'll make sure. And of course, we have our own networks that we can make sure to share for each respective district. I really want to thank you for reaching out to help set this up. I think it was really helpful in helping me wrap my head around it, and I hope so for the other council members. With that, this hearing is in recess.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everybody.